Sit's 6:32, so we'll go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
And we will begin tonight by administering the oath of office to Carl. He was unable to make our last meeting where we swore everybody else in. Do you want us to be in any certain location? Can we do it right here? Okay. Need to get in front of.
I do solemnly swear, I, Carl Rudy, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of North Boone Community and Community School District in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employers. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can only be made by a majority vote at a board, a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and equality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster the Board extensive participat-- I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community formulate goals, define outcome, sorry, of the community formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course of North Boone Community Unit School District. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment design to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's school to advance the vision for North Boone Community Unit School District. I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Well said, sir. Congratulations. He's used to public speaking. All right, that taken care of. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Here.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Maxi?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Here.
All right, um, do we have anybody interested in changing anything about the agenda? If not, could I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve agenda is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Hazelhurst and a second by Maxi. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mohollan?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have no audience-to-visitors cards. Did anybody come in late and want an audience-to-visitor card? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to treasurer report.
This is presented. We have a gentleman. We have. 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 That's all I have.
Any other questions for Mike? Any clarifications? If not, thank you, Mike. We'll move on to item number eight, committee reports. Policy committee, do you have anything for us?
Uh, we actually met earlier today and we're going to have the policies in the next board packet because nobody would've had time to review them for today's meeting, but we did meet until you see them in the June packet.
Right, any questions for Mary? Thank you, Mary. Brings us to business services.
Assemblyman report.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Facilities and long-range planning?
Tom. We haven't met.
Okay. And CIA.
We haven't met with the. All right.
Okay, thank you. That finishes our committee report and that brings us to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda containing the minutes of the special meeting of April 17th, the minutes of the regular meeting of April 23rd and May 10th, special meeting of May 10th, personnel, approval of the IASB annual dues, the group eight program requests at the high school, athletic training agreement, set date for budget hearing amendment, and then C I A resolution. Can I have a motion in a second, please? For the consent agenda.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rudy. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mohollan?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Everly?
Yes. Motion passes. Brings us to unfinished business, the technology purchases.
Yeah, um, this proposal was presented at the Board and it's the exact, uh, well, I guess the PowerPoint has slightly changed. We pulled a few things out. Um, it includes computers for staff at the high school, additional devices for the U E and replacement devices at the middle school. Um, in this recommendation here, we're talking about technology purchases, but we're looking through the leasing plan to move some of those, um, devices towards one-to-one at five through eight and then growing, uh, devices for the staff at the high school in preparation towards, um, growing devices the following year at the high school. A few of the things that, that we've talked a lot about, uh, and again, back to the instructional side of things, uh, a lot of our series, the i-science, the H M H math, which is the Go Math, and what's our new one now? The Intu Math, um, pushes a lot of, um, technology-type programs that enhance differentiation back towards the classroom, towards our, uh, learners for differentiation and even for individual learning, whether you're accelerated or students that are struggling and need interventions. So many of these programs are really, uh, using the technology side to reach more kids. So again, this is something we're looking to grow differentiation, we're looking to grow student engagement, support the resources that we've brought in. Um, the last time too, we, we talked about, you know, what are the, uh, what are the reasons that we're looking to do that? And again, it's, you're, you're looking to push that instructional academic game towards those kids, whether it's student engagement, whether it's differentiation. We've got Melissa here that is going to break down some of the leasing structures versus the buying, so we can let the Board have discussion through that. Jerry has also looked into the warranty side. I've had a chance now to talk with Kerry a little more, uh, even through professional development and what our instructional goals would be towards, uh, growing devices in our classrooms. So, um, Kerry, I don't know if you and I have talked quite a bit about it and gosh, you said it so much better than I did when you talked about it, but, um, if you wanted to share a little bit about just your views and how this enhances instruction in the classroom and even how it affects teachers.
Sure, so I think, um, in moving, you know, kind of to this, a device for every student in the classroom, um, what we can really do is give them the opportunity to not only show us what they know in different ways, like we can really utilize the technology and support teachers in how to assess students in different ways through different technology platforms, um, but we can also then work with teachers on how to tailor their instruction and differentiate that instruction for small group settings, um, to really help students grow in the areas that they need to grow. And so we can use student data, um, not only from our large-scale assessments like I A R and, um, S A T, but also from our MAP assessment, um, that we give three times a year for our younger kids and I know two times a year as they get older, but, um, to really differentiate and target those areas where they need to grow, um, in order to see that academic growth and that academic achievement. So, um, I think it's, it would really help us move towards that. Um, yes, we would have to work on that professional development piece, which we've talked a little bit about. Um, and I think also utilizing Schoology that I know we have in the upper elementary and middle school. That's a great platform that we already have and that some teachers are already using that we can then leverage, um, and use more with our students and that can support that differentiation and assessment as well.
You know, Jerry, you guys, I believe, also are one-to-one up in South Beloit, right?
Sure.
And I'm catching you totally off-guard.
No.
And I, this just dawned on me, that's sad when my ideas pop to the head like this. Um, and I know I've talked to Mr. Fisher and Mr. Fisher said, you know, a lot of the things that they saw really focused on differentiation and student engagement.
Yeah, I think that's the big piece is the differentiation part, uh, because you can do online, you can do small assessments or large assessments, uh, whether it's, or did they learn throughout the course of the year? Did they learn today's lesson? Uh, and then you can use that information to decide what you're going to do next year. So even if it's a, you know, simple day-to-day thing, uh, as a little five-question quiz at the end of class, well, then there's a couple of ways you can go about getting that information. It's okay, guys, share your papers, we're going to grade them, you're taking away from instructional time. Or a teacher's going through, you know, 120 little quizzes, uh, that's taking a lot of time out of their day when they couldn't be working on, uh, lesson planning and targeting different students and things like that. So, um, that's, that's been the real key for us is giving, giving the teachers, um, you know, things like MAP scores, which are really useful, so we can get those target skills and, um, work with kids that way, but it's also really good for the, for the day-to-day, um, getting information and freeing up a lot of time for teachers to, to then, instead of grade things or plan things that are going to be useful in the next days.
A nice job. I usually try to never target you like that and throw you on the spot like that, but...
It's made of metal.
But I appreciate it.
Is there any other question? I'd be happy to answer any more.
And how many, and Mr. Fisher did invite us if we ever wanted to take a tour up there. He said he'd be more than happy to set some time aside if anybody wanted to see the one-to-one program working up there. How many years have you guys had it now? Are you in year four or five?
I want to say it's been about five.
Five.
Because I know the last two years as an instructor, I mean, when I still have the classroom, we have, I want to say, and it became, um, you know, it didn't consume, you know, 45 minutes because you're still asking kids to be engaged in what the teacher always were doing with, with new material. Uh, the kids with all that assessment information are going to be asked to be introduced more often because they're going to have more free time to do that instead of, you know, taking up some of your job. Um, so it's really changed the way that teachers structure their classes. So, you, you worry that you're going to get these devices in front of the kids. It's just, okay, kid, stare at the screen for an hour and call it a day, but that hasn't been the case at all. Uh, if anything, it's promoted a lot more productive conversations, people, conversations.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, any other instructional side? Because we, I'd like to talk the leasing side and then the warranty, because those were also questions there too. And for the leasing side, I'll turn that to Melissa. You've kind of looked heavily into that and we started that.
And part of this, we're trying to do, um, to get devices into kids' hands under the same budget, should we use the school, as I said, that budget we have, but we can't create ways to get the devices the same amount of, uh, reducing that much of the time. So for the, um, looking at getting, um, about 20, uh, devices, um, for these students, seven, eight, we're looking at every place they have those devices, about, um, so, and so our options for purchasing, versus purchasing devices, um, as far as the total, um, cost of those are directly one hundred dollars. That, talking about device, for a teacher device, if they're recommending, or is there a, um, that they're going to make some, um, change? So we look at the least option, which, um, the first year would be about $49,000, and for every, uh, year about $20,000, so, um, $49,000, that's, um, and then for that four years, you can buy all of the devices for dollars, so the shingle, that's just, um, those devices, they simply have a six-year lifespan, so here we have another two, depending on who's such a, um, that are, so, um, we can get, this is the constitution of how it's for summer, there's four years to use the devices, uh, so if you show about $14,000 for this four years, and I just put this together, this is just kind of a, what it may look like if we decided to go to, since this is now, um, uh, just six-year cycle, we could do one in school, four years, um, at high school, because I want to make sure a four-year, one-school does that, you know, so, um, we don't have to, um, contract and not have the budget to continue around with the, this is just a general, what it may look like, um, and we could do all these, uh, levels, and so, um, containing, um, the impact, not like, um, control. So that was the least recommendation that we had to, please, was, you guys, about 465 devices. Any questions on that? Please, again? About Jerry, looking to the, um, insurance side, because we talked about, what is the core cost of this and how would we, what would we do with something like that, so that just...
We had a question the last meeting about, uh, how the, or do the devices need to be insured? Um, so I asked the leasing company about that and said, as long as we have full liability insurance, which is our regular insurance for fire, tornado, floods, all that, we would be covered, or they're okay with that. Um, I also did look into accidental and, uh, four-year coverage for the devices, um, that we didn't pay extra for. Um, out of my three quotes, uh, it'd be about $78 per device to get the accidental, um, insurance on them. And so for all 465 of those devices, it'd be about $36,000 that we need to spend right away, um, just to get that on there. Um, I looked through what I've spent on laptop, laptop parts, um, over the past couple of years, and it really hasn't been that much. We did spend a little bit more this year due to an odd issue that we had with our power bodies, so we spent roughly about $70,000 district-wide on laptop repair parts, um, but...
Was that this year or?
Just this year.
Just this year.
Yeah. Uh, we spent less last year, about $2,000 less last year on those, or on the same, uh, line item when it comes to laptop parts. Uh, this year we received about $920 back from the students who paid for half the repairs, uh, that $7,000. Is there any questions on, via that?
I think in summary, kind of when we talked about it through the tech team, the cost of what that plan would be was far more than they felt the actual cost of repairs and their time. And when I talked to them about their time, they didn't see that as a big, huge overtaking. They, they felt like the plan would be more expensive than their time and then the actual cost of the repair from the tech team.
Wasn't one of the questions that was raised that if we're leasing them, that, that shouldn't be our responsibility?
I think, yeah.
Like, is it required? Do I have that?
Uh, no, that if anything, if you're leasing something and...
Shouldn't it be the...
It would be whoever releases it.
Whoever leases it.
That more than likely, they would just swap you out or something like that.
We would just fix it, just like any other device.
So it doesn't, a lease... But it doesn't, I think with those leases, they won't, they won't cover breakage, like, uh, like some of your breakage, you drop it, you...
It's a dollar buyout, too, so, I think at least we give them $46, $25, and they'd be ours. So it wouldn't even matter.
But I'm right on that, though. If we, if a student breaks the screen, like a lot of times, we'll see, they, they put, close the notebook in the screen, cracks the screen, they, those, uh, those warranties won't cover those types of things, right? Right, Jerry?
Well, the accidental would, if we did purchase that, but like...
Oh, they would.
The manufacturer one-year warranty would happen.
Gotcha.
So that'd be a $26, if it's your...
Okay.
I realize we might have a semantic issue here. I was thinking, just like the device functioning, not a student breaking it, but it just functioning. If something goes wrong, I'm assuming with the lease...
It's ours. Well, after the one-year manufacturer warranty, it would be our...
That would be ours.
But I did have that included on all the four-year accidentals. So like, say if the battery went bad or the motherboard went bad, um, that would be covered with, you know, that $78 per device for four years.
With that extra insurance?
Yes.
It's breakage and...
And the three years of, you know...
Is there a deductible? Is there any claims on that?
Zero deductible. All the deductibles were $50, and so I figured, you know, what part of this is $50? The other part that's more $50 on these Chromebooks is the motherboard. So, I did find a vendor that will repair the motherboards for, our table's around $35, if they went bad, we'd give an option.
So, just a functional question, but, um, do we have the infrastructure in place to, I assume these devices won't last all day, so if we're charging devices in the middle of the day, are we going to get our full period, standing in the back of the classroom trying to...
They're awesome. They last, I think, like 13, 14 hours. So for the first three years, I don't see a problem with them lasting all day. Um, the plan for these are to keep them at school, so they will be charged nightly, uh, at this point, um, and so for a couple of years until the battery degrades, we shouldn't have any problem with that. We're, we're in year four with the current device, or all those ones are in year four in the seventh eighth grade, and they're just now starting to show signs of where, um, where a teacher will be more mindful of the students to, you know, shut them down, um, you know, at lunchtime or, you know, P E class, uh, except leave them on, they won't last all day. And that's after four years of these devices. Stuff's gotten a lot better, especially with these new ones, they're a lot more, a lot more low voltage than the current ones that we have, and, um, much more redefined, um, as far as the drop points. Um, I think we're, we're at about 12 inches of drop point with this new device than with the old device, so we're probably excited to name.
And the older devices we have in seventh and eighth, correct me if I'm wrong, are Windows devices?
They are Windows.
Not Chromebooks.
So...
A little different device there, too.
Yeah, a lot less maintenance with the Chrome, you know, it's basically just a browser. But, uh, you know, we can push different extensions to it and then eventually we will be able to push apps to it, but at this point, we're just using the extension to the browser. We've actually been...
I was just, there's, okay. Those are the devices I'm talking about.
Jerry, when you had the, um, $7,000 figure for this year, how many devices was that?
Yeah, I didn't count the device, I just counted, just screens, um, keyboards, batteries, and then a few other miscellaneous parts.
But the assumption would be is that if you get more devices, if you had 465 devices this year, you would have thought you'd see higher than 7,000, right? If you had a smaller installed base and you have 7,000, um, just, I happen to have a, um, an unplanned conversation with, would be your counterpart at another school, I believe they're a one-to-one primarily with Chromebooks, and they're on a four-year replacement schedule. They, it's like fifth grade, ninth grade, um, I don't know, would South Beloit be something close to that or is it a four-year?
That's an ideal replacement schedule for them. Um, was that school taking them home or...
I think they were taking, the older kids, I think, were taking them home. Not 100% sure on that, but they, yeah, the four-year warranty and stuff like that, it was, um, that seemed to be the best trade-off for them in, in kind of doing and things. So it, it seemed to me like, to think on a Chromebook, that you're going to go more than four years to be kind of, uh, easy pushing it.
This brand new device, they're saying six, that's all on the Chromebook. It's the first one ever to them to put that on there, usually it's about four or five years, and, uh, they're, they're saying six years on this new device.
Yes.
It's different than any other Chromebook that's ever been out as far as their ability in being at school or designed for schools. So our hope is to get four with the one-to-one, and then move it to an elementary after that. So it is...
Joe asked me, like, what happens with all of our older middle school ones? The ones that are still good and can be used will disperse those out to elementaries and to high schools because there's still good laptop devices available. And some of our older stuff then in our middle, in our elementary schools and our high school then would be recycled out. The ones then that we are getting ready to throw away at the end of the year, I believe you guys go through a recycler, right?
Yeah.
And have them come and take our own stuff and recycle it.
Yeah, we'll probably, we're going to find all the good ones and then the bad ones are going to be.
Part of them.
Be a junkyard to go through and pick parts out. Because we did, I did forget to mention, some of those replacement parts were the spinning hard drives, the traditional hard drive. And we did upgrade those to the non-spinning SSDs. So a lot of a ton of those to move around the district wherever there's need plus all the other parts of the device. And I believe the screen in those devices is pretty universal as far as a lot of the other devices we have around the district. We only have like two different screens that move across all the different brands of student laptops. And so if a screen were to break, we could take one of those older ones or one of the ones that we take from the seventh eighth graders and use that screen.
I'm just curious, Jerry, is there a company we work with that comes and takes them all apart and takes out the precious metals? And is that at all valuable to us or is that just?
That's how they do it. I mean, they wouldn't come and take them out if there wasn't some sort of value. And so I don't know if they get the gold here. I know that they sniff off the gold areas of the computers and then they might send it to another country to process. But that's what the value is, isn't it, especially the gold? All the main points inside of a computer are real gold. And there's a few other ones that there's like only really gold.
We don't just dump them, is what I want to hear you say. They just go in a dumpster, right? There's some sort of system that works there?
Yeah, they take them all apart and get the precious metals and recycle the rest of the taxes.
Recycle, that's what I wanted to hear. All right, any other questions? Is there anything else to present?
So I guess I continue to be underwhelmed by the presentation. Mary and I had the privilege of Jared being at one of your South Lloyd board meetings and listened to the admin team sit and talk about the data that they'd pulled off their devices and how they used it to drive curriculum, how they understood on a Friday that on Monday the data told them that the kids weren't where they need to be, where you guys anticipated, where we were going to be in MAP scores ahead of time, where you anticipated where you were going to be in P S E and whatever all the jargon is for all the testing. We don't have any of those kinds of conversations as we talk about spending over a hundred thousand dollars to go down this path. And it still disappoints me. I wanted the curriculum director to be on board and talk about differentiation and stuff. We don't talk about what we're going to do with the data. There's never, we never have that conversation. I mean, for four years, I think I've talked about exactly the same thing, wanting to understand how we're going to use this technology to drive the academic function of where we as a group think we should be. We're not having those conversations. This just feels like, you know, we need Chromebooks because everybody else has them. And we don't have a conversation about what we're going to do with them. So I'm disappointed.
Could anybody speak to that?
Molly, you were talking a little bit last time about H M H and the assessments that come with it that were built in. Can, I know I'm putting you on the spot and Ed has asked, can you speak to that better? I mean, just because I don't see it in the classroom every day.
And I haven't seen this particular assessment, but you know, these are benchmark assessments that we can do three times a year. And that's just to know who will kind of track around one. And if they're on the right track, it's going to be a routine. It would be an assessment that can be pulled out each, kind of like that, that all of the students we take all personally, it seems to take. And if they feel like they're going to give it away, and so they start to be able to tie it into actually the text that we're using, so you'd be able to go from there. I think a little bit more to the exit, too, is kind of like those assessments that we do in Schoology is that the kids are taking this on Friday. And the teachers can see it's rated right down there. It's when they're, the kids are, you know, they're taking the case, it's rated pretty much down there, it's up to the orphaned admissions, which is my greatest. If we missed the mark, if we hit the mark, if we missed the mark, now this is going to rise. No matter what's going to drive it to Monday, it's either on Monday you're going to be doing some reteaching or on Monday you are going to be.
And I think back to when I watched it in one classroom with a teacher that used it phenomenally. When the kids broke out, she broke them out into five, five different small groups. Every kid went to, it was math in this case. And whatever program they were working on, that program was tailor-made to whatever their previous assessment was that showed some of their weaknesses in whatever skill it was, if it was fractions. So one group might be working on fractions, somebody else was working on something else that they were struggling with. Some of the stronger kids were differentiating up with something that was more advanced. And that was what I remembered in one of my elementary classes there and that was what blew me away. The kids that were, the differentiation that went on in that classroom and that's what I see me wanting to get at. But those individual programs for whatever the math series that they were using, which I think was envisioned at that time in Valparaiso. What the teacher did, every one of them was tailor-made to whatever the kid had previously done. So they were all working on something differently.
I know, well, even in Schoology, even if you take it and then we've been talking about having, having common assessments in Schoology. If one person creates that assessment, which is, it's a factor already, it's like the teachers. But if one teacher creates that assessment, and this isn't such the case in our, the LA teacher. But if one E L A teacher creates that assessment, share it with the other E L A teacher. Now, if it becomes a common assessment, you have a whole E L A teachers that are going to be using that assessment. If they do take that assessment, even if they're taking them on a Thursday, you say, okay, where are our kids at? It's a quick grade and now we can write instruction. I'm not sure what program they're using, South Lloyd, and I saw it to kind of drive that direction from there.
I think that was the thing that was actually most impressive. I don't think the presentation was about software.
It was just about how.
It was just about how they used it to drive the value back. And those conversations must have taken place, as organized as the presentation was that we watched that night. Those conversations took place before they probably brought devices. For us, we have a school that rocks it this year, but we need thirty days to try and understand what happened because we were surprised, seemingly, by Allison's successes at Capren. I shouldn't have been surprised, do I, should I? I don't think so. I mean, I think there had to be factors out there that people understood, you know, if we were using the data the right way, that we were going to have a school that rocked it this year. And, you know, I've seen those presentations made from Doug Phil, I've seen that by Byron, you know. They understand, there's no surprises that when those school districts take the state testing, they already know where they're going to be. It's just a validation of where their data already took them down. I'm in the technology sales business too. My customers would not accept these kinds of arguments. I want you to put sixty thousand dollars worth of technology in your tractor or combine. Why? You know, well, we're going to do this, we could do this, we could do this. We have all those conversations about what they want to do with the data first before we try and tell them to sell them the technology. So I, I get it, you know. It's just, it's going to turn into an argument, but I think it's a disappointing opportunity to really embrace technology to help us move the academic needle of the school to sort forward. If we're not willing to engage in these conversations, I don't know how we're going to get there.
I think, Ed, you might be worried that we don't have a system in place, once we have these devices, like a learning management system. But we have, we do have Schoology, so we, maybe we just haven't heard about it, is that?
I think it's just that we haven't heard about it. I mean, every day this time, they have three teachers moving together and they go over what was going on, you know, that the following day, the previous day in all the classes and then they talk about how they can build upon that.
I've been sat down with Mike and maybe I just made a note to myself, maybe we should. You created a technology plan, but I think what Ed's maybe struggling with is we still can't see that, oh yeah, we already do. When you say Schoology and I say learning management system and we talk about common assessment and the textbooks, hopefully they're on a different system, but it syncs with Schoology, I'm assuming, I'm hoping. Okay, maybe not? Okay, and they'll be able to create assessments and they'll all be on the same system. I think maybe part of the problem is we still don't see that all together yet. And so maybe I should sit down with him and go, this is at least what I think I'm talking about. And then maybe Ed, once we have something, we can sit down and.
I believe Ed is really speaking to that implementation of what's happening to the classroom.
We don't want to just, it might feel like we're just buying devices.
And what Ed's speaking to is where I want us to be. That is what I want us to be.
And I'm very visual. I'd like to see that, okay, yeah, we've already thought about cords. You just made me think about cords, like for some reason we don't have cords at the college. I had no idea why. They must be really expensive. But we have to share cords and, but, you know, that we've thought about hardware and software and learning management systems and common assessments. And ultimately, definitely, we have some, Carrie, some data that you can start presenting, maybe perhaps relatively soon. And maybe already, maybe it already exists in Schoology where we could see, this is sort of what we're talking about if you want to see it. This is what a learning management system would look like to a teacher and here's what it would look like to a student. That might, that might be, I don't know, I don't want to speak for Ed, but that might be part of the problem is I don't still think we have the technology plan I envisioned where we see all the scopes coming together.
How does this impact the instruction?
Because this is an awful lot of money and this is an awful lot of money.
Is it pretty similar to what our budget's been for the past four years?
Yeah, I have not raised the placeholder. The placeholder's been similar, you know. And I don't know if anybody else can speak, Jared or even Carrie, if you guys can speak to the, how you get to that implementation of it to the classroom, you know? Where are you really using the data? And to be honest with you, that is where I'm looking to try to get to. We've got to get to it. We haven't had good structure there yet. That's where we've got to strengthen. So that you're using that data, that student feedback data, to then really impact the instruction and the next steps to move the needle.
Curriculum ones, we will need to come in and do, and this is where I'm coming in, and I don't know what is currently here yet. So what part of that curriculum plan will need to be it for our district is to really create those common assessments that our students will be taking that are really district-wide. And so that way, I mean, we have MAP, but we also need shorter, smaller assessments. You know, MAP is only given three times a year or two times a year because we don't always give that poll assessment. We don't want to over-assess our students either. You know, we have to be careful with that. And so if we can create those small common assessments that teachers can give, I think that, Ed, that would help give you what you need to be able to say, here is what our student, how they're performing on these small checkups and now how can we quickly get that data? And if we use technology to do that, we can turn that around more quickly than if a teacher has to grade everything by hand or sort all of their students by hand. And then how do we, you know, change our instructional model or how do we improve our instructional model or how do we enhance? Because depending on where we are in our different buildings, to really be able to then use that. And I think one of the things that will really help us with that is to come in and really work with our teams of teachers on how to create those common assessments. So they're the ones that are really learning how to do that. And then how to then use that data to tweak their instruction and really doing that for whether professional learning communities or teams of teachers. I mean, so I think if we can, but we have to build those first and we don't have them yet. And so we have, that's really part of that curriculum work is building those common assessments and getting them into the systems that teachers can use them.
And then the next step that I see is us setting that tone for those instructional conversations that enhance better teaching, you know? And that's where the teachers get together and that's where we've got to get to. And I know that's abstract.
So what we're asking for though tonight are the devices. We've already got a learning management system. We've already got a curriculum coordinator who will coordinate all of this. And we already have teachers who are ready to give these short in-class assessments, maybe at the end of the week, maybe even every day, depending on what the teacher is. All of that is already in place. Now, you're just asking us to buy the devices?
Yes.
Okay. That might help because I'm not sure we've seen that and maybe Ed's not sure we have that either.
I think we're still abstract on then how does this look inside the classroom with discussions?
Did you want this to be much more concrete?
I haven't heard anybody say that we have common in district grade by grade assessments.
I think we soon will, if I'm understanding them correctly, and I think like from the point of a teacher, once I'm in my learning management system and I create an assessment or we all sit down and write an assessment, I can share it with other classes, other teachers, individual, just a Google, like a Google Doc, you can sort of share it.
To be developed.
And it will be Power Schools, data is user-friendly. We've thought about like what it will look like. It'll be useful to us. It won't be a bunch of obscure numbers or Excel spreadsheet. It won't be that. Okay, good. And can Schoology really differentiate? Like I'm trying to think, could I differentiate and I don't think I can differentiate on my learning management system.
It does give, because you assign certain things to certain, so you get your feedback from your data. I know these kids and these guys, I have these three others.
I could create different modules and tell you to go into module one and you in module two. Okay, so that way I could, all right.
We do have other software too that will create sheets that are as different software as that. So based upon, you know, if they answer this question, this question, this question wrong, this question right, so we create a custom learning app for them to do those other questions that got wrong, right.
Let's work together to, I'll at least share what I'm thinking visually and.
The other piece of that is, is it kind of flows to the calendar for the school, which I created next year too, is we have S I P days in October and April, which is the small district one. But then in September, I think it's November, January and March, I've created late start days so that those are some of those meetings for subjects, departments, grade levels, where that instructional conversation, that data can be looked at. That's got to be the next piece to help, like I said, foster those conversations that goes along with the common assessments.
All right, any further questions?
So we're looking to get a vote here to, today possibly?
What I would hope for is a vote tonight and if it doesn't pass, you know, that's the board's choice. But what we would do is look to get the vote tonight because if I delay it any further, we don't have it to start the school year. And I know that to start the school year, by the time we get them shipped, because it takes a little while, I believe they come from overseas most of the time. And then by the time they get them imaged and ready to go to the classroom, this still gives us a window of time to be up and functional for the start of school as long as everything comes in on time.
I spoke with the middle school upper elementary teachers at the board rolls meeting and they just kept going back to needing more devices. And that was, that was their primary, primary concern and.
My upper elementary teachers are, I mean, they're ready to go with more devices. They would love to have them. They have sought out and asked us for professional development towards Schoology and have even asked if they could do some of it on their time this summer, where we did something with them for professional development with Schoology towards this summer.
And the high school teachers as well expressed that they would appreciate more devices and be able to use them if they had them.
But that's really the challenge for us, right? The group of teachers that I sat with, this conversation never came up. One of the biggest elementary schools that we have in the district that never came up. They're concerned about class size, they're talking about class sports, talking about social emotional needs. So we haven't really even had that discussion. We spent this morning, what do we got off to give the teachers that, in some of these other buildings, what they're looking for?
I absolutely agree. I mean, this is, I think this proposal is within the budget that we've already had. So I, I don't think it's unreasonable, but we absolutely need to address those other concerns too.
Tom, you've been awful quiet. We'll give people time to think and I'll put you in the hot seat. Do you have anything to add or share, thoughts?
I guess I'm looking at this more on the, not on the angles that you folks are looking at. I'm looking at the costs and the budget and those pieces like that. It comes down to, if this is the way we want to go, I'm still looking at the lease versus outright purchase and the warranties and stuff like that, which I think is still a discussion piece, so.
Now, the recommendation was to lease, so do you, do you feel strongly perhaps we should consider buying?
I think thirteen thousand in interest is thirteen thousand and do we have the cash to buy it? I would lean towards buying and I would lean much, probably the same thought in my mind like when we looked at the school buses this year and leasing and things. And I also look at the warranty piece that I think given Chromebooks and I don't know about the part about not letting the kids take them home or the students take them home. If that all has to do with the breakage piece of it and things like that, but I, I guess I'm looking more on that, on that side of it. So I'd lean towards buying, I would lean towards the agreement and you tell me what it would look like on the budget. I mean, that's thirteen thousand towards a thirty-six thousand warranty replacement.
Melissa, would you want not to put, you also, I'm going to just put everybody in the hot seat tonight. Would you be able to speak to any of his concerns or the rationale, the recommendation, if I believe was to lease? When you weighed all of those, why did you fall towards the leasing?
I know these are jobs that we have to make in touch with the management. So the, did we announce about the hundred and forty thousand?
That's a little bit more.
So we'd be short about thirty-five thousand from every two of the sets, two matches out.
That's just the first year?
Yeah, that's true. And that would be if we purchased outright, five for eight, ten high school teachers, those two things. New money, some new money we have spent on voucher. If we leased the five eight, we just high school, we have been in the budget that we're expecting. So that was not, how come you have more devices in case you have, yes, thirty-two thousand, I agree with you, but that is a concern.
But if you're disciplined in years two, three and four, you pull back money that you could potentially understand your, spend under, sorry. you could potentially under spend your, spend under, sorry.
Because we know, like, elementary schools don't necessarily need potential, they need to learn, so, but you know, it's just different, so are you, it's a technology, different technology.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, in the example that you had on the lease, you're looking at holding the technology with your budget numbers in years two, three and four.
Yeah, that's okay.
So if you don't spend the money, or if you spend the money upfront, we would still expect that you're going to hold the technology purchases or, so.
I share the same feeling. I'd rather just purchase them.
Purchase.
And not lease.
Is that perhaps an easier discussion to have? Carl, do you have an opinion about the purchase versus lease?
Not a strong one. We're talking eleven percent. No, I suppose my inclination would be to put the purchase up.
Mary, do you have thoughts on purchase? The direction we go versus leasing?
I would have a tendency to agree with the guys over there that just purchasing it and avoiding the maintenance charges if, if we can, if we can do that.
Ed, do you have any?
Normally leases are, they save you money, so this is not one of those cases.
And Melissa, if we went that direction, you'd still be comfortable with that with the understanding we'd pull, rein ourselves in years to come, two, three, years, two, three and four, if we purchased outright?
Yeah, so this is, uh, we're back to our, uh, pressure.
I will add one comment, cost adjacent here.
Please.
That, I resonate with Ed and that I would say as we get closer to the team voting on leasing tonight, I would want to articulate a pretty clear statement in Schoology that we revisit and continue to review the technology use in the classroom, especially as we introduce these new devices and, you know, as we see what that whole semester has brought, how teachers are implementing it in the classroom. I'd like to see clearer feedback and especially with your curriculum directing position, that that comes back to the board and really see where the rubber's being rode and how those numbers are being used and coming through.
I agree with that. The other piece Carrie and I talked about was working with Ekra to see if there was a way of doing something with a variable about introducing tech to tracking data with our data warehouse. So that was a conversation we were going to have with them too. We don't know what that looks like, but if we talk to those, the ones that work with the metrics, we're hoping that maybe they've had some way of defining how to do that too. So even if there's a way to track data. But no, that, I would agree with that too.
I would ask Carrie again. Carrie, maybe the, the concern is the cart before the horse and you feel comfortable that we, we aren't going to be in that position, that we'll soon be collecting data, the, okay?
I think so. I mean, yes, based on my knowledge of what we currently have, it's not being here yet, but, but yes, definitely. And I think we can, if this becomes a priority in the upcoming school year and we, we focus our efforts on really supporting the teachers with understanding of how to use Schoology and how to build those kind of assessments in there and how to share that data. And since our upper elementary and middle school teachers have their team time where they can really talk about data for their students, I think that's a great place we can leverage, you know, leverage that time to maybe having those conversations around student growth and then student achievement, you know, how those kind of assessments.
If we shifted gears back to the general moving forward, purchasing the cart, I guess I shouldn't say that because there are electronic carts too. Purchasing, moving forward, any, any other thoughts on that? I also, I'll say I was at Manchester and at Manchester, the technology was, wasn't a main concern. I'm sure they are not, I don't, can't speak for them, but I don't assume they're opposed to technology. I just don't think that they see a great need for it at their school.
We've given, we've purchased last year Chromebooks, I was able to put eight in a year, every room, and new libraries, or some additional Chromebooks, every classroom is new right now. And I know, you, you're pretty happy, we're happy to have it. Originally it was four, a year before, it'd been more than four now, but we're going to have eight, we're like, yes!
And that was through PTO, right?
Um, the eight was what we purchased, they ended up with eight based on the changes last year.
Oh, country.
We had an additional cart, and I was, so having a cart is part of our classrooms. And that way, every classroom has that, so it means it's been, um, doing things, it's just, you know, the guy that we're in, and then, um, through, um, building that, basically, which is, one more for the classroom, we do have to leave on, but we have, so we still have enough, so it's like, I have only kids on it once, I have a cart, so, that, I haven't heard that as a big concern.
Right.
Yeah, I would say that's not something that's been, somebody here that they are listening to.
Yeah.
I, I will make a side note too, and maybe Allison can, when I met with the K-Rem Acabean staff, they did articulate a desire for more technology. So that was something that came up pretty short into our meeting.
Yes.
That they, they are, yeah, they just seemed to be pretty desirable commodities and at least, there's that.
And that's what you're going to see is, as the students get older, their screen time increases because what they can use for their education or that differentiating increases as they get older. Our little ones, our kindergartners, first graders, we're not going to have them in front of a screen as much, or they're not going to be using the technology the same way a seventh or eighth grader will be. And so more time is spent using our Chromebooks by our third and fourth graders and some of our center. We, we too have, I mean, we're about two to one, students to computers or those, our Chromebooks in our building, but we also have some retired tablets that we have done. So we have six, seven tablets in each of our classrooms. So the teachers are utilizing those during their center time or during certain activities. Sometimes they're publishing within the classroom rather than going all the way to the computer lab, desktop computer.
I guess since it's during discussion, I'll just say, I don't know where the vote is going to go, but I too am very concerned that we're, that we're moving forward when we don't have all of our ducks in a row and I haven't seen it. So I have serious reservations doing this. I think it can be incredibly useful. I think someday it will be incredibly useful. I think the diversification which came out of our review of our curriculum shows that we need to, we need diversification. I think this can be great. I'll say I'm, I'm concerned of moving forward, that maybe we're moving forward too quickly. We haven't decided that this is going to be a goal for the year. And this seems like one of those things that maybe would be a goal. But that said, I'm going to trust our curriculum director and our IT director and our superintendent and our admin that's here and hope that we will be seeing very quickly the collection of that data and the presentations of that data. Soon we'll feel like, alright, yeah, that was the right decision and not just sort of be always waiting like, is this, is this the right decision? And because we're going to be asked again for another chunk of money. And I'll still be, I hope I won't be going like, well, is it even working? And then asking Carrie, Carrie, you know, we've been in this a year and here's another three hundred thousand or whatever it is that we're looking at for a year. So I, I just wanted to voice my reservations and I'm sure you guys understand those since we're sort of in charge of the money and there, there's a chance that people will go like, why did you do that? But I'm also going to trust that you guys have thought this through and this is the direction that you think we should go. But I am going to work with Mike on a plan and so that we can see it. That's my two cents. Anybody else? And do we, if no other discussion? Mary, did you want to chime in on that?
No, I'm good.
Ed, do you have feelings on purchases and over leasing or? Do you have any, you have feelings on purchasing and leasing or?
No, I, I feel like if, if you're going to go on leasing path, it's because it saves money, this one probably doesn't, wouldn't save you any money.
So if somebody were to make a motion, it would not be for the leasing, I think, yes, it would be leased.
Is there amended purchase?
Do you have a, do you have the number for the full purchase price?
Yeah, so to purchase the, there's a recognition of the forty laptops of high school by the teachers, which is about thirty-eight thousand. And then the new middle school devices was a hundred and twenty, so it's about hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the warrant. Which is about thirty-five thousand over any one of the two.
And that's if you don't do a extended warranty.
Right.
So my rough numbers on the extended warranty is it's just under a twenty percent loss. You said it was about, what you had found was seventy-eight dollars?
Seventy dollars per device, yes.
Not counting the laptops, so you're just talking Chromebook, very Chromebook. So over the life, if that, well roughly twenty percent of the devices would be, is the school year, six months, somewhere around that? You'd be looking at about four devices a month broken, roughly coming in. Do you think you have that much in four hundred and sixty-five?
Yeah. I mean, probably not at first unless there was an effect, but over, probably within the second or third year, we'd start seeing a few more issues coming.
It would seem to me one to two a week would be, accidental breakage would seem like a...
We'd have, we'd have a lot of breakage this year. They, they came later in the year. At first, we didn't really see a ton.
I guess where I'm going with it is I'd like to at least see the warranty. I'd like to give you the authorization to proceed with it, maybe think it through a little bit more, but to me, I would be leaning that way. Right, I get, I'm just thinking aloud. Right now, if a student brings in a broken screen where it looks like it's clearly their fault, do they share any part of that?
They sure have, they probably do.
So is it possible that you could offer a student the accidental warranty on this or something and they could pick up a portion of it or something? It just would seem like there'd be a way that a, and maybe that's an option if they're going to take them home or something like that, that it would be...
Maybe it's, you know, twenty-six dollars for a screen and twenty-six to thirty on a keyboard, it's an availability, availability. Those are our average breaks right there. So it's, you know, they're paying like twelve dollars and change for a broken screen, they can have that. You know, or I could offer them fifty dollar insurance per year.
I guess...
Take the...
So the purchase price was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand? How much, what was the number? I would make a motion then that we would purchase the Chromebooks and laptops at a purchase price of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And that we would give the technology department the discretion and the business office to pursue the warranties. So for about thirty-six thousand dollars, up to that amount. And if it comes in less or you come up with an agreement that you think would make sense, you can certainly spend less, but I, that would be my motion, is for sure on the purchase and then up to that amount for the extended warranty.
Do we have to purchase the extended warranty upfront or can we get it while it's still under the factory warranty?
Well, I, that includes accidental, so there's three years of accidental in that and then three years of like the general, you know, the battery goes or motherboard goes. Because it comes with a one year already. But I believe all these quotes I got were upfront, pay the full four years to get it.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Alright, we'll call Ms. Kelly.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
So for me, it's really about, you know, having spent four years asking for the same information to get something like this moving forward. At the same time, I guess, supporting some of the issues that the teachers group brought to our attention. We get blamed for a lot of things that we do, being told that class splits and, and shared classes are a function of the budget. It's really a choice that we make as far as how we decide to spend money. So my vote is no.
Mr. Hurdie?
Can you clarify the motion? Or do you read the motion?
Um, to approve the Chromebooks and laptops for the hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars and give the tech department and the business office the opportunity to pursue warranties?
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
No.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Prinze?
Yes.
Motion passes, I believe. Thank you, folks. And that brings us to board goals. I spoke with Mike a little bit.
Go ahead.
I spoke with Mike a little bit. We still have to finalize our board goal discussion. And we have had our initial meeting with the admin. We, I think, are through with the staff and teacher meetings. And now we need to coalesce those, merge those together.
And strategic planning.
And strategic planning, yes. So my initial thought was that I would be presenting to you guys, do you want to have another special meeting where we get together and hash that out? Because I'm assuming it's going to take quite a while. Mike proposed, which is another option, that he and I sit down with all of those, see the commonalities, create some goals and present those goals in a regular meeting, which we could still have a great deal of discussion, but at least we would have, already have something. And you have, all have access to the, you all have a copy of the notes, or you soon will, of the notes from all the staff meetings and maybe we can put something together for strategic planning. Do you guys have any desire one way or another to meet during a special meeting with Mike and anybody else? I guess it would be an open meeting, anybody else who wanted to, to finalize that and turn that into an official document to be approved at the next board meeting? Or would you rather Mike and I sit down and hash through that?
And our thought was, if we took that information, see if we could come up with some common threads, formulated some goal verbiage and bring it to the board and say, what do you think? Is this what you're hearing? Is this what you're seeing? A lot of the, kind of the verbiage stuff is done, but the board could kind of finalize it, tweak it out there.
I'm glad you guys working, working it out together unless there's other people in the district or who want to have input on it honestly. There's people that want to have input on the, on, and finally.
And like I said, I, I just assumed we would be having another special meeting. And then at the board meeting after that, we'd be approving whatever that is. But it doesn't, it can be whatever you guys want it to be. I'll save you the time and effort. Mike and I can save you the time and effort unless you really want to sit down and do board goal writing. Happens fairly quick, doesn't it, Allison? That special meeting was fairly expedient and right to the point.
Like, but I am, yeah.
So, Tom, do you have a, a feeling one way or another?
I believe so.
Okay, Carl? Or whomever. It wouldn't even have to be just Mike and I, it could, it could be one other person. It could only be one other person.
If somebody wants to replace me, sure.
No, I, I think that consolidating forces is, is, is what we're looking at.
Okay. Alright, Mary?
I agree with Carl, I think getting something kind of consolidated and, and together before we all meet would...
Ed? Then we will go ahead and move forward with that and I will maybe shoot the dates. See if you guys, if anybody else is interested in joining in and if you all say no, I wouldn't be surprised, but if somebody's very, really chomping at the bit to be in on that, we could have one other person there without needing a special meeting. Call an official meeting. Alright, folks, that brings us to new business, the May 2019 bills. All right, folks, that brings us to new business, the May twenty nineteen bills. Do I have a motion and a second?
I had a, yeah, I had, it's my month to review the bills. I looked them over, they're, they look good to me, so I would make a motion to approve bills as presented.
A motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call please Kelly.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to the approval of the school calendar.
Uh, yes. My apologies, I spaced there for a second. So this has been a never-ending process. The calendar does reflect the one hundred and seventy-six student days that are now required by the state. The calendar also has its parent conferences in there, it has institute days, and like I said earlier, it does include the late starts. I'm at a point now where I really want to get the parent, uh, the calendar out to the parents. It's really pretty similar to a calendar we've always had in there with just two minor, two minor changes. You'll notice that we have extended conferences, only one time in the fall and one time in the spring, but a longer period for the conferences to happen on one day, and then we've got the four late starts in there. But the general start time, the two weeks at Christmas, the spring break are all very similar to what we've done the past few years. So looking for the board to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
That brings us to health insurance renewal.
So we had an insurance committee for our health insurance renewal. We're very grateful for that. Our overall healthcare renewal was down three point six percent for this coming year. We're still maintaining that twenty-one hundred dollar deficit and we're still hoping to be that, um, how the HRA account, which is in our, um, where if we're over that five hundred and twenty-two hundred dollars, that change is definitely going to be there. Uh, yeah, so our program has gone down three point six percent. Um, and our vision remains the same as next year, others will be, um, and insurance just about, um, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, so overall, it went down. Any questions?
Any questions for Melissa? If not, do I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve the renewal of Blue Cross Blue Shield, Dearborn National, Delta Dental, Delta Vision, as provided by Arthur Gallagher.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion by Maxi and a second by Hazelhurst. Roll call please Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to the amended budget.
Yes, this is something that we have to do this year. Melissa's got a little more detail on it, but it's really, it's got everything to do with us making sure that we move the right amount of money before the end of the year, which we planned for with our bus purchases.
So our budget amendment, to the degree I might be adopt our budget in the fall and then about this time here, we want to make sure that we can reimburse for, so I talked to our auditors and I made a recommendation that we should have our budget this year. And so I, it was hard fun together for our business services to, yeah, go through it really quick, just kind of showing you guys where we were trending at, um, I feel like at the February in all of our funds, and this is what kind of drove us, drove me to decide that we wanted to ship them, so make sure that like, um, was straight. So education, our fund balance there is a lot of money in, and this is all of our expenditures for teachers, for the service, all of that. Um, and you can see our budget is the blue and the remaining is totally green. We have, we're over, we just have a few more buckets in our budget, so as you can see, we're, we're trying to wow our education and the stars in our budget. Um, that's why we have about thirty-five percent remaining and we have seventy-two percent which is what we're going to ship. O and M, operation maintenance, this is all of our building repairs, grounds, our fund balance is there as well, um, and you can see the same with our budget remaining there and then the same way, about thirty-seven remaining. Debt service, this is one of the areas that we're going to need to amend because about a week and a half the board decided to take some stuff, so we have about three hundred and ten thousand, um, we're handling that budget to include that in there, so we're looking, um, for that, and you can see how that can dip down, we all will be in charge of that. And then this is our amendment that will increase the bottom budget by three hundred dollars. Um, transportation fund was the other fund that we needed to look at. Um, we determined that we wanted to purchase those buses, um, and so that has not, those came to be fulfilled this month. Um, seriously, it's not reflected in our budget for the remaining, but that will be a requirement for this month as well. And so the two line items that we got here, the physical bus, which we talked about, our bus repair maintenance services, I undershot this year, we had some repairs on our buses just because of the weather. We're getting rid of a lot of the older buses, so I hope they're not coming back from, um, from what they were, fifty thousand extra, but I'd like to move both of them, just to make sure that. And you can see right now, transportation, we saw about twenty-nine percent remaining, but when to purchase those buses, that will take place. Our IMRF social security fund, um, this is all of our healthcare, social security, retirement fund there. This one is good, our benefits remaining as well. And then capital projects, this is our sales tax money that we use for all the big stuff that produces construction. Um, this one we pretty much spend, our budgeting is pretty much spent on there as far as those big projects that we set up. As you can see, we have three percent left, but that's because we do all those other projects in June, and so it's probably something. Our TORT fund is all of our insurance, unemployment, compensation, um, our fighter safety, um, those are two smaller funds that we use very specifically for making the budget better, so they're just kind of small ones. Our overall expenditures at that time, we did about twenty-nine percent remaining in our budget, we spent about seventy percent, so I feel the right way to reduce those two funds. Any questions on that? I will be bringing the budget, um, that and the budget to guys.
Any questions for Melissa? All right, are we ready to move on to the next one?
Yep.
All right. The next one is the superintendent evaluation tool. I just wanted to take an opportunity, we're supposed to discuss this in open session. If you would like, if you folks would like to amend, make any changes to the evaluation tool that we used in this last cycle, moving forward, I'd like Mike to see what the tool is going to be sooner rather than later, so I wondered if anybody had any interest in amending that. Additions, deletions, we'll of course be adding whatever goals we come up with, that will be part one, if you will, this being part two or vice versa. But I wanted to give you guys the opportunity to revisit that and I also wanted to ask, is there any logic, you know, as we're finalizing goals in June, but goals were really supposed to be done like a couple months ago, is there any logic in extending this out a little bit further and giving us more time and then just starting in August for the, the evaluation cycle and goal cycle and then ending it at the end of the year? I don't know who set the calendar to be what it is, but we, we like do February through November-ish sort of, December-ish, which is right smack dab in the middle of the year, and I just wondered if we should be, our goals for the up and coming year and your review should, should cover that year and not like half of the years.
Like last year when we did the goals, I thought it was hard because a lot of the goals we picked, um, like when we focused on SAT, we focused on park, and I want to say we finalized like the goals in April or May, we had already taken the test for what those goals were, you know? Um, I don't know that it changed any of our initiatives, our initiatives were still probably focused the same way, um, but I think it might depend on what goals we choose to look at and pick.
Okay.
And I'm sure the evaluation piece has got to do timing of how contracts sit to, because superintendent's contract will run from July one to June thirtieth. So obviously, which my hope is this is not where you're wanting to go, but if you're looking to make a change, you typically would start to make that change a few months earlier before the end of the contract. So I think, I, I think that that's how the timing is set up.
All right.
That's my guess.
Does anybody have any thoughts on the evaluation tool, one way or another? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Should we give ourselves a month to look at it more closely and bring it up, should I put it on the agenda for the next meeting or are we just good to go? Okay? Tom, are you okay as is? Carl?
So you do one cycle of this and six hundred change of this.
Okay. Mary?
I don't, it's, I think it's fine, I haven't had any.
Ed?
Yeah, let's take it, we'll see where we are.
Okay. Good, easy enough. Capren Elementary Field then.
Yeah, Allison's brought this proposal forward. Allison, I'll let you go ahead and start.
All right.
This has been something you've kind of had on the radar for a little while here.
So, um, yes, so, uh, Capren Elementary, when I started there four years ago, you know, one of the things I noticed was just our outside facilities for the kids and the community to use, and one thing is our ball diamond. So, so this presentation is just our little field of dreams, um, and, and I took a quote from that actual movie, you know, if you build it, he will come, you know, we've all seen that movie, I think, maybe. Um, and, and the idea is that, let's see, um, back it up to the, to the history a little bit. So the history, just to give you guys a little idea, Jim Koch Mulvena was a PE teacher, a coach and mentor of countless students in the Northman School District from nineteen seventy-eight until two thousand and ten. When he passed away, his family generously donated funds to Capren Elementary School in the hopes that it would be used for the students and families of Capren in a manner in which Coach would be remembered for generations to come. And I've been working with different community organizations, um, over the last few years to try and get this project to fruition. So now that time has come. Our project goal is to create a space for schoolchildren to play during PE class and recess, um, for local organizations to play and practice, and of course, our families to use for fun. Uh, the project plan, um, is to grade the current field. You've been out to Capren recently, um, I, you know, there's, there's more over holes and grass there than there is a, a ball diamond to play on, so we want to grade it and add some new lime, uh, to install new fencing from home plate down the first and third baselines and to erect a memorial sign that would read Capren Elementary Field of Dreams in memory of Jim Koch Mulvena. So our project plan, which is another slide that I've got in here, um, funds not used in the initial field restoration, the lime and the fencing for the baselines will be placed into our Capren activity account under the Mulvena, we'll keep it under the Mulvena Fund at Capren as a source to maintain the field. Those of you who were part of that long-range planning we had on the temp, one thing is we do these wonderful things for our facilities and then there's nothing to keep them up. So part of this plan is to actually keep a little bit of money in the fund so that we can add new lime each year, do some treatments to make sure it doesn't become overgrown with weeds again, um, and in the future to put up a, a nice backstop. Um, the project, the cost of the project, and it's a little updated from here, um, this will cost the district zero. This is at no cost to the district. We have to date, I'm gonna update that, received thirty-nine hundred dollars. Capren has received thirteen hundred fifty, fifty dollars from the family of Jim Mulvena to help fund an athletic PE, and I call it an opportunity, I didn't want to say a field or event, they just wanted something in his memory. Um, Capren PTO has donated a thousand dollars to be used on the ball diamond, and we have received funds from Capren Lions Club, Northman Youth Sports, several anonymous community members and organizations who, they have donated additional funds and will be donating their time to complete this project. So any questions on this? Basically, I'm bringing it to the board because this is school property and this is something where we want to do to honor Coach as well as provide a facility for children to use and families to use both during school day and...
Want to make sure that the board supports it.
Does anybody have any reservations?
Do you want to share what was why it hasn't been done till date?
Um, I, it hasn't been done to date because I needed to get, I've been working with, sometimes the youth sports program said they wanted to take it on. Um, I had power baseball, um, the Lions Club, I had, two years in a row, I had a, a Boy Scout who wanted to earn his Eagle Scout. Um, to me, I want to do this, I met with the individual, gave him the time, because it takes a lot of time, um, to plan and organize it. So two years in a row, um, I had an Eagle Scout unfortunately not be able to come up with a plan. So then this year, I said, you know what? We're gonna get this done. And so I reached out to Brian Dahl, Art Vermette, those are names that some of you might know, um, we had conversations with our PTO and everyone is in agreement, this needs to be done.
This all, it's your time, this all was your tenure at Capren. I mean, this money was donated long before.
Yes.
I mean, when this was first proposed, it was shot down by previous superintendent.
And that's unfortunate. These kids need, these kids need it. As you, as many of you know, our youth, our youth sports programs are growing very quickly. They need ball diamonds to practice on and, and even play on. So this is again connecting with our community to create a facility that they, that's safe and legitimate for them.
Allison, just out of curiosity, what's your estimate for the different maintenance costs?
Um, different maintenance costs, I'm gonna go back on the slide that I did some notes on. Um, like, deck fencing is, it's, it's a quote of about twenty-four hundred fifty dollars. Um, the lime, um, this year it'll be two hundred dollars. So moving forward, um, I'd like to keep at least two hundred dollars for lime each year, not, no, I like to overshoot rather than undershoot. So, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to keep about five hundred dollars in the account if possible and then continue to raise money to encourage the incoming principal for next year and the PTO, um, just to keep, keep kind of an earmarker there, so you can keep an upkeep. Plus, um, you know, I, I keep hearing of more organizations that hear about this and want to be a part of it, want to donate money, um, so ideally we'll have that backstop. Um, the backstop is very costly, um, like upwards of five thousand dollars. So this is something that we need to keep, um, but with the small amount of money I have now or the fund has now, this I felt was a good start. Give those, give those fences down the, the first and third base and then clean up the field so it's usable.
Has any outreach been done to reach all those people from seventy-eight to two thousand and ten, who knew Coach and would be interested in ten, twenty dollars, organizing a benefit, asking, might that be an option? I mean, we don't have to discuss that here, but I mean, I would just think that there were plenty of people who knew Coach well enough that they'd go like, yeah, if there were enough of us, it wouldn't be much money for each individual.
And, and the great connection we have is Art Vermette, who, I mean, the Vermette family has been in the district for a very long time, and so he has, you know, reached And so he has, you know, reached out to people. Dean Schultz, the custodian right now at Capren, he's got so many connections around. So the idea of a fundraiser, that I'm not going to say that's out of the question. And part of why I put that quote in there, "If you build it, he will come," is kind of, we started and people start to see, you know, that we're able to do something nice and keep it up. And then they might ask more about it in that word of mouth.
Thank you, Allison. I think you have the official thumbs up.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. And families and kids at Capren certainly appreciate your support.
That brings us to the middle school summer school teacher.
Yeah, this year we did have one summer school teacher that was going to help with middle school students that needed to take summer school. We've had a few more kids now that are potentially, and even more, that are going to qualify for summer school. So we're looking to add a second teacher to help with summer school for our middle school students that struggle with grades.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
What happened?
I wish I could speak to it. I, I don't know. I mean, that's, that number's higher than we wanted. And like I said, past trends have not been there. I'm hesitant to yell a trend yet until we kind of stop to look at it. But that's not what we want to see, how many kids are failing. One of the numbers there, when you look at 62 and just having been a principal there, you've got, so like, that's the potential number. You also have a lot of kids that are scrambling right now to make sure that their grades get up. So I don't anticipate that number being at 62. But I remembered very well working with parents and kids to make sure that they were staying on their grades and their academics right up to the final day. So, but that number's still too high. So I hope Mr. Lewis is listening.
I have comments. Yeah, I would agree. I mean, that is a lot of students. And I don't know if you want me to just speak now or...
And like I said, I haven't studied it to stare at the trend. And I'd hate to shoot out something there that if I'm not factual yet, but...
But regardless of the reason why, we still need the position.
We, yeah.
And maybe, maybe you need a little bit more time and maybe you will be coming back to us with that information of the reason why. But regardless, we still need this.
We need to accommodate those students for the summer based on our administrative practice and policy.
Does anybody have a motion? We'll have a discussion after.
I would approve addition of middle school summer.
We have a motion and a second. Does anybody want to discuss it any further? All right, folks. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Motion passes. I want to ask the question, what happens if they don't pass summer school? But I don't want to do that. Maybe you'll tell me later. All right. Let me, we need a motion and a second to adjourn, to move to executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees to the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, as well as collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, as well as the placement of individual students in special education programs or other matters relating to individual students. Do I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Maxi, a second by Rudy. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes. Motion passes.
Yes, please.
Folks, there's still a lot of not-too-old leftovers. Please help yourself. Thank you for coming. If you don't stick around for the entire executive session, it was nice having people in the audience. Thanks, Nick. Thank you, folks. A motion by Maxi, a second by Rudy. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
I always feel like that if you're going to vote against something, that you ought to let people know and make sure that they understand why it is that you're voting against it. Really disappointed that my fellow board members don't understand the value that an employee is brought to the district internally and had the opportunity to work and make improvements to what's been done to a school that's been grossly underserved. Very disappointed that we didn't promote somebody that's talented from within our own ranks to the positions my votes know.
Mr. Rudy? Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Abstained.
Yes.
Motion passes. Mary, Mrs. Maxi, you have one more?
Yes. I approve up to 13 sick bank days. Felice Skidner contributed from any NDEA member for the remainder of the 2018-19 school year.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Mohan?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any other information, announcements or information? Can I have a motion to adjourn? In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, everybody.